Good evening, everyone. It is now five o'clock. We're going to start our city council meeting with a work session. And we are going to go right into that with the discussion of the moment P I D. And I'm going to turn it over to Sam.
Hello, everyone. Sam Alder will be a Davidson, we're an underwriter. Presented to you guys, probably plenty of times, but it's been so long in between that it's always good for another refresher. I'll give you kind of just, once again, I kind of have a deck in front of you guys and you guys probably seen on a number of occasions, but it just has some of the information and then we provided a little bit of updates on what happened to the Ben Wellman project and the changes that have taken place there. And a lot of exciting progress that have been made on the development since we've last spoken. Feel free to make this as interactive as possible as a need to be a presentation. This opened up for a Q and A, but just as a quick reminder, a public infrastructure district is a quasi-governmental entity, a separate entity from the city that has the ability to issue tax exempt debt to pay for public infrastructure and real estate development. So the district is subject to an approval by the city council. And once that district gets created and it operates as its own distinct entity and has its own board that operates that that district. Some of the reasons why it were created was to fund infrastructure for new development without impacting the municipality's balance sheet. So, you know, it doesn't roll up to the city's balance sheets rather than the city having a bond to pay for improvements against their impact fees or against their general funds. They're able to utilize one of these tools and let the developers go out and finance the infrastructure. It does allow for better financing vehicles to pay for infrastructure. So the interest rates in the terms of structure of the debt is cheaper and better than private capital. And so it gives access for development groups to the capital markets to pay for for infrastructure. Optimized development, the municipal bond market is a fortunately a dollar market. The high yield space within that is fairly large. So there's a lot of capital to deploy into Utah through these types of tools. These investors are tax exempt municipal bond funds. And so they're looking to invest in tax exempt instruments. And so these tools give access to to put their money here in Utah. You know, they've been around for decades in other states called different acronyms across the different states. But a lot of the money historically before two thousand and nineteen, before these tools were replaced, were going to to other states. They're still going there, but we've had a lot more money being deployed into Utah through these tools. The last thing is there's no impact to the to existing citizens. So this allows growth to pay for growth. So the the tax burden or ongoing payments or assessments are only imposed upon the people within the boundaries of this development and not outside of it. And so existing citizens of Harrisville, one necessarily have to have their tax increase to pay for improvements or impacts that are happening outside of the area where they live, even if it's within the city. So these tools are only impacting people within the in the Lomond Views project, not anywhere else in Harrisville. A P I D has a number of ways that it can raise money. The most common are through an additional tax above and beyond her existing tax. Essentially, a developer self imposes a tax on themselves. And then when they go and they sell the home, they just close to the buyer that they're going to be subject to an additional tax similar to an H O A that will be imposed upon the property. What we'll do is we'll project out what that tax will be over a thirty year time period and try to bring that money back today to put in the infrastructure to enable that development. The second option, the most common option, is through an assessment lien, where you impose a lien on the property that gets amortized or paid down over a thirty year time period similar to a mortgage. And the developer, what they'll do is they'll put in the infrastructure with the with the lien imposed. And then when they go to sell the home, they'll prepay that assessment lien. So there's no ongoing burden to the homeowner. So they can utilize both those tools at the Lomons View project to pay for the public infrastructure within the developed. Those two options are kind of described on six and seven. So if you want to read in more detail about those two different options or two different types of bonds that the P I D can issue, then you can review it there. Slide eight just goes to to say that about a hundred and sixty P I Ds have been formed over the last four years in Utah. Kind of outlines the different cities that have approved P I Ds and in their jurisdiction as well as the counties. So lots of P I Ds have been created, but created for specific projects, right? This is not a tool that should be utilized for every real estate development that happens in the state. It shouldn't be utilized or even contemplated for every deal or every project that happens within Harrisville. I think we should be using these for master plan communities, things that require a lot of offsite infrastructure and have a lot of public amenities. So just as a quick little recap for, you know, the development since it's moved hands throughout the process of you guys have been here and I've been in here is the this has been acquired by flagship homes through an entity called P C P. They are currently actively working on the project. You can go out onsite and see all the improvements that they've done as as well as park improvements and they can speak more to what's been done onsite to date, what their plan is. But they're moving fairly quickly on the infrastructure, trying to prove out to the city that they're different than than the previous groups that were there and that they are committed to spending money and building homes in the community that was that was promised a while ago. This project's consisting of about nine acres of commercial space. It will have sixteen acres of parched trails and open space as well. And so those are some of the amenities within this area and some of the infrastructure costs that require more efficient type financing, more efficient type of financing that's available, the faster they can get the homes up, the more likely they are going to be able to support the commercial that that is contemplated here in this project. It does have, you know, the the price points in which these homes are anticipated to be listed are in more in the attainable range. It's bringing on about the three hundred and eighteen new homes that are under, I think it was five hundred thousand dollars. So a lot of homes coming in here under that price point. So bringing in attainable housing to the area. And once again, these tools are utilized to pay for heavy offsite improvements, which have been installed and are continuing to be installed here on this project. The next really kind of the rest of it is just through the pit creation process, right? Where we submit a petition, a letter of intent to initiate this process. And then we work through a governing document, which is ultimately what what kind of governs the and provides the parameters and how a P I D can be utilized. That governing document should now be available for you guys to start reviewing. We did submit a petition and L O I to the city for the creation of this. But essentially, you know, it will provide the the maximum tax rate that can be imposed, which would be five mils or a half a percent of additional taxes. It outlines the maximum debt that can be issued with these bonds. It describes the improvements that are intended to be financed. It describes the board and how it transitions. So ultimately, the goal would be to be on the agenda for for a vote next month on the governing document and as as the as to officially create the I D. So that's kind of the process in kind of the background context again on this. I'll kind of just open it up for questions because I know we've gone through this. I didn't want to belabor the point, but I know maybe a Q and A might be more helpful to to spend here if we have questions.
We've been working on we've been working on affordable housing at with this year. Now, so how does that impact when putting the P I D? Because I realize what a P I D does is Mars infrastructure. But I also know it adds more taxes, which is more money that these residents are coming in to pay. It does pay off. So does that kind of counterbalance what we're trying to do with affordable housing? That's one of my questions.
Yeah, it's a it's a great question. I think in terms of, you know, to to tackle affordability, you need vehicles in place that deliver supply, right? And provide cheaper forms of financing. So if a developer was to go raise money in the private capital markets, they have to hit certain amount of returns for those investors for them to be willing to invest, right? So if they can't sell homes at a specific price point, they're not hitting the returns that those equity holders require, right? And therefore can't deliver those homes at that price. If you're able to get cheaper forms of financing, you're able to hit those returns at lower loan prices. So while an additional tax does add an ongoing burden or an ongoing payment into into a mortgage, the hope is that the the cheaper form of financing upfront allows them to still sell it at a lower price, even with the additional tax in place. Also, if we can get more supply into the market, obviously, that will probably drive affordability down more than anything, right? As it has more supply, we hit the the less demand that we have chasing every one of those homes, right? Which is ultimately driving up whole prices over and over again. I mean, the supply shortages in Utah are pretty substantial.
I understand. Living around here, what housing has gone on? It's like it's it's like water hitting your whole pantry and still sort of right up.
Yeah.
Which means they can pick their price and they're still going. Whether it's up or down, price on that home is losing its own. It's not being driven down because we have more homes available.
Yeah, I think you I think you will see that. But I think in in terms of what you're saying is in some instances, people that have put supply on the market, maybe targeting a specific return and only selling it at a specific price, right? And if they can't hit those return margins, they won't sell it.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. So I think it's a, I mean, the 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 conversation of affordability is a very challenging one. And I don't think I have the answer to 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 tackle that. But what I do know is that these tools do allow for more supply to hit the market. And supply and demand is obviously a big driver of affordability, maybe not the only driver of affordability, but also cheaper financing in place that allows people to sell homes at a lower price and still hit the same returns. I think access to the tax exempt market in particular is extremely helpful. It's, you know, you're either getting a return on your money or an interest rate cost of like nine or ten percent versus getting, you know, six percent money. And that can help you continue to sustain the project and keep delivering units given very challenging times.
So if it doesn't happen, then everybody in the city is on the book. For infrastructure, if it doesn't, there's not a P I D.
No, what I guess what I'm saying is that like the developer's ability to pay for these improvements is difficult, right? And when the city is typically, you know, the city will give reimbursements to a developer for certain improvements that they're installing that the city needs, right? A lot of the times, the impacts like not being able to put in certain improvements or whatever becomes an obligation of existing citizens as growth continues to take place. This is a way that you're taxing the citizens that are moving in that are causing the growth, right? To pay for those improvements rather than taxing, you know, higher on the existing citizens. The goal ultimately to drive down any tax on it on on future citizens is to bring in commercial. We know that, right? That's it will drive down tax payments for for residential homeowners. But you have to have roof rooftops as well in order to be able to deliver a commercial without it being becoming a blighted area that, right? And so the idea here is that the faster they can get the homes up, the more they're going to be able to support the nine acres of commercial that are going to help drive that down for not only the citizens that come live within the Lomond Views project, but also for Harrisville city.
Sam, you're here. Everyone, it's good to see you. We've been working with Jenny and staff to to review the governing document petition L O I. Kind of make sure everything lines up with what we would expect for this type of P I D. So behalf of the city, looking at that, the information they submitted to us is actually kind of on the lower side, what we're seeing P I Ds ask. And when I say lower side, there's a few different things we look at when we're looking at what the P I D is requesting. Per state law, P I Ds can ask for up to fifteen mils, which is one and a half percent for property tax. In this case, they're asking for five. So about one third of what they could legally ask for per state law, which I think is very important because it shows us two things because we reviewed a lot of these across the state. One, you're working with a smart developer. You know, developers that go in and try to ask for ten or fifteen mils just don't understand the market. They're they don't understand really what they're asking for. It's in my mind, it's a first red flag, right? In this case, it does show that they do have a good plan in place, although the five mils or half of one percent, you know, would be paid for strictly by the residents within that area. So it'd be an additional property tax. It is on the lower side. A lot of them are asking for six and seven. And that's because so much of the horizontal public infrastructure has gone up in price. So they're trying to offset more of it. So I was happy to see that they were asking for on the lower end of that range. So that's one thing we look for. Two, and this was just a conversation, you know, I've had a staff with Jenny is a lot of times you use these tools when you're working with the developer that you've had a good experience, good relationship with, that's kind of doing a give and take as you've looked through this entire development. Because again, at the end of the day, the goal is that this infrastructure, this P I these P I dollars will be used to enhance the development. Something that if you were to go into Harrisville, you'd say, wow, I can obviously see that this is a very organized. This is something's connected here versus potentially other developments that may not use P I dollars to pay for some of the upfront. And it kind of looks maybe more piecemealed together. I'm not sure if that's the result of any developments here in Harrisville. But that's often what we see because they have to phase it out because it's so expensive to try to raise that much capital and they can't float it as a developer. So I think there are different benefits here as far as the pit goes. And my personal favorite is when they use P I dollars, it's tax exempt dollars. And they can borrow less from a horizontal private lender. So the equity and the value that's brought in there, it comes in on day one for them. Because at the end of the day, the person that's losing out is a potential horizontal lender that wants to give them a ten percent rate at taxable rates. Whereas now they can bond it at like six percent tax exempt. So it kind of just helps offset their capital stack with the goal of helping enrich and enhance the development that they're working in. So again, the mill levy looks very appropriate. From what I understand, it's been a good working relationship between the city and the developer. So it seems like a potential project that the city may want to help with as far as approving them to have these P I dollars to enhance that development even further. And I was glad to hear that the price points under that half million recently in in the city where I live, I was touring some townhomes as part of the the city staff, city team. I won't mention any names. But the townhomes are selling for six hundred and ninety thousand dollars and my jaw hit the floor. And so, you know, I know affordable, attainable is just kind of a word, but the more that you see the price point on some of this stuff, the more you're just like, I am very lucky and probably very blessed that I was able to purchase my property at home when I did. But hopefully, you know, now there will be an opportunities for others. It's more supply interest in the market to be able to get in at lower levels as well. So that's just my comments. If there's any questions for me or our team, we've been working closely with Jenny and Jill and her team on this. So happy to to address it from the city's point of view as well.
Sam, I have a question. Just on the governing documents, when it says with more of trustees. Okay, so how does, just explain to me again, from when the P I D is created to when it really turned over to the people that live there, how does that process work?
Yeah, so it's 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 similar to an H O A. It's got staggered terms. So it's a it's a four and six year staggered term for the board. The board is made up of the property owners and their designees. So indeed, at the beginning of the process, it it's the developer and their designees to the landlords. And then and then ultimately transitions over time at either those terms. Or also, we have provisions where the board will transition at specific certificate of occupancy. So the the goal is upfront, while the development is still occurring, the developer controls the board so they can disperse the funds for the public improvements that they were intended to go for. Eventually, as it transitions to the homeowners over time, they have the ability to refinance that debt and choose how they want that money or their debt to be used going forward. So for example, originally, so right now, the the ask is for up to a half a percentage or five mils of additional taxes. When we issue that bond upfront, there's a lot of risk to an investor, right? They're taking the risk that a certain amount of homes are going to get absorbed over a certain amount of years. And at the price points of those homes, they're going to sell at some price point and the assessor is going to assign a certain value to those homes. That tax gets applied to whatever the assessor says is the market value, right? To to pay back the bonds. When eventually there's five hundred unique property owners that live here, that risk becomes mitigated substantially because there's five hundred unique people making property tax payment, right? There's not any absorption risk anymore. There's not a risk that people are going to buy that are already there. So the board of the P I D, which would be controlled by the homeowners at that point, like an H O A, can refinance the debt because there's less risk. So we can get a lower interest rate and we can get a better structure of debt. And what that pit board will almost always do is it'll lower the mill levy. So they'll use the inefficiency from the original bond and now they've been enhanced. They're going to use the efficiency of that refinancing to lower their mill levy from, let's say, five mils to three and a half mils. And the reason why they want to reduce the bill levy is because they want to reduce the impact to then today versus oh, let me reducing that impact to some future homeowner, right? Because they don't know how long they're going to live there. So they could shorten the debt. So it's a thirty year property tax. They could say, we want to refinance and have it be twenty five years, right? But why would a homeowner do that if they think they might live there for only five more years, so three more years or seven more years? So they always reduce their payment in that given year.
So there's, what is the risk to the city?
No, no risk to the city. I mean, obviously, someone could, you know, knock on your door and say, why are my taxes higher than this project over there, right? And we know that's the common, common concern. But from a financial risk or a legal risk, there isn't any, right? The 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 way that these tools have been written statutorily is that they're a separate and distinct entity from the city that don't roll up to their balance sheet or have any legal recourse back to them. And the idea is for it to just be that, right? I mean, just like if you think about master plan communities such as Daybreak in South Jordan, it was built upon an assessment bond that was issued by the city. So in the event that, let's say, someone fails to make their assessment payment and the bonds go into default, the city is now on the hook to step in and make those payments or potentially have legal recourse back in the event something was misused, right? That that obviously isn't helpful for the city, right? And maybe some cities are like, okay, we we feel like we can accept that risk and we're willing to step in. Because we're going to, we're going to be able to borrow at a lower interest rate than this P I D that has no history. But then again, why should the city take all that risk onto them to help these developments take place? Can you still help them, but without having the financial and legal obligation set up?
What are we looking at? It's maybe crystal ball. When you talk about five mils, how does that equate out to six hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, that's a good question. So six hundred thousand dollars and in so in in Utah, if it's your primary residence, you're only taxed at fifty five percent of its market value, right? So you get a forty five percent tax reduction. We anticipate that all the homes in this project will be primary. It will be very unlikely that they'll be secondary. Maybe somebody would buy them as an as a investment property, right? And be taxed at a hundred percent. But then again, if they find it as a secondary property, I don't know how concerned we are with them having this slightly slightly higher tax than what we're describing. But if we assume that it's a primary resident, right, of Harrisville, you'd be on a six hundred thousand dollar home, you'd be taxed at an assessed value three hundred and thirty thousand. If you apply a half a percent to that, that would be sixteen fifty a year or a hundred and ten dollars more a month. So it's kind of very in line with what you would see in an H O A. And that's what the developer really has to consider when they're choosing to impose an additional tax on someone, right? Is can this homeowner bear this in their payment, similar to if they create an H O A, right? Can I do that? So smaller homes, right, or less valued homes, let's say, you know, homes that are in the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range are going to pay less than, you know, someone that has a seven hundred thousand dollar home. Because it's all based similar to a city tax or a school district tax on the assessed value. So for a four hundred and fifty dollar home, it'd be about a hundred and thirty dollars a month instead of a hundred and ten.
Says four hundred and fifty dollar home. I wish that's what you meant.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. I wish there was four hundred and fifty dollar homes. I'm just, you know, I just say things that I want to open to existence. Good question. Yeah, the hope, once again, the hope is that that six hundred thousand dollar home, right? As the project gets built out, gets refinanced and that that mill levy, let's say, goes from five mils to, let's just say, it's three point seven mils. And that results in, you know, a decreased payment of nine dollars more a month.
Hey, Sam, when you talk about disclosures, so that people understand they would be so good.
Yeah, so disclosure has been, that was like, that probably a good, good, good thing relates to like, what, what is the risk, right? I mean, obviously, there's there's risk in any one of these that, you know, somebody buys a home and is just unaware that there was a tax on it, right? And that was a a key concern right from the get go during the creation of these tools. But it has been an ongoing concern, you know, over the years as well in terms of how can we make sure that this this buyer is disclosed? So they've enhanced disclosures substantially over the years. And I think it's disclosed, I want to say, seven times throughout the buying process. It's on a separate colored piece of paper. It's entitled, you go to your mortgage, it's on the M L S, right? We're really trying, it's it's in sales office, there's a separate paper that's posted in an opaque, you know, location that says, you know, you're subject to these additional taxes and this is what your payment would be. So the idea is to make sure that the buyer is uninformed, right? Will that eventually slip past somebody that that doesn't look at that separate colored piece of paper or doesn't catch it the six other times it's disclosed? Probably, right? But that happens as well with H O As and all sorts of things like that. The nice part about these relative to H O As, my H O A in particular, I think it was like a hundred dollars a year in my community. And it immediately shot up to like seven hundred dollars a year, right? Like within two years. These can't increase past the five mils. There's, they have to either be a five mils or lower, right? So it does set a cap in which, you know, a buyer is is understanding them. I, you know, it's not going to increase past this way.
So does the pit take the place of that H O A? Do they take all those responsibility?
It can offset, right? An H O A will still be there for, you know, in certain communities for private amenities, right? So if you have a private clubhouse, a pit is not, it's not an entity that's intended to operate and maintain infrastructure. Remember, it's supposed to finance public improvements. So anything that they're dedicating to the city or to the, you know, to the county or to a local district, like a sewer or water improvement district, right? There's continuing to do the same standard dedication process for those improvements that the building to the same standard. The, you know, the city has to sign off, they're built to their standard, et cetera. So that whole process is the same. This is just a tool to finance those improvements, right, more efficiently.
So being a simple homeowner, that I look at is how much does the six hundred thousand dollar house cost me? And now I have an H O A and now I have a pit on top of that. So I'm just saying, what's my blind dollar?
Yeah.
I don't know what a six hundred thousand dollar house costs now.
Right, yeah, then with an H O A with the tax and whatnot. Yeah, I think you can see what your annual payment is going to be, right? And when you go and get a, when you go and get a loan, right? Your your loan officer is going to tell you what you qualify for with the tax and the H O A. That is their obligation, right? In their underwriting process. So unless they're paying pure cash and running that analysis, then they're they're likely going to be informed. If they have, you know, and and how much they can buy this, how like how much they can qualify for. But with a with a purely cash buyer, right, they're going to have to analyze that and determine what they feel the value is of a hundred or, you know, a hundred and fifty dollar H O A or something like that.
So what are people selling houses? Fourteen million dollars?
Depends on what interest rate they can get.
Right, four thousand. Four or five thousand. Four or five thou.
Yes.
Well, maybe you're right. Any more questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, if uh, if they choose not to do this, it, are the price of the house is just gonna be higher?
You know, I would, I, I would, I would say, I would say, all else equal, yes. Like, it's a really difficult analysis to determine as well, because when a buyer comes to choose whether they wanna buy a home or not. They're looking at so many factors in that home when they decide what price I'm gonna pay, right? The location of that home, what direction the home faces, like, I wanna face west because I want the sun beaming on the snow, so I don't have to show it, right? I want shade in the back in the summer if I'm facing west. Like, people choose different locations, right? The, the quality of the home, what, what improve, what uh amenities are in the community, what um, what type of. Uh, features come in the home standard versus what do I have to upgrade to pay for, right? There's so many factors that go into it. I think in HOA, the tax are another factor that people consider, right? And I think people that don't wanna buy a property that's subject to an additional tax for HOA will go across the street. Or will go somewhere else and buy a property at a different spot, right? I think you're gonna see that. Some people will choose not to buy property within the loan infused, you know, project because it would have a pit. That probably happens, but the developer is being very aware of what, how this might impact their marketability. And have to be very cognizant of what tax they're willing to impose before they deter a buyer from really wanting to purchase it. But I, I mean, I, I didn't wanna buy a property within a place that had an HOA, so I chose not to, right? Similar things are gonna happen.
So what are we using, I mean, for?
Good, yeah, the idea is to pay, so, so the, the, the additional tax of five mils, I think, is generating around five million dollars. To six million dollars worth of proceeds, right? What we've identified is that the off-site improvements, the upsizing of the infrastructure. Uh, the, the, the regional and public amenities are summing to about that same amount of six million dollars. So the idea is that the tax bond is being utilized to offset the costs. Or help pay for those types of improvements that are kind of above and beyond what you would see in a standard infill development. And then what they would want to use is the assessment bonds to pay for all the other public improvements, but they would pay down that lien when they sold off. So should be going towards public improvements, whether that be off-site, whether it be amenities, or whether it be roads, curves, gut. Curves, gut, gutter sidewalk. Water sewer, so I didn't say those probably are good.
Is that money trapped?
Yeah, so, so it's a good, great question as well. So a PID has, it's its own governmental entity, it's subject to audits. Right? It's got a, an accountant. So there's a district accountant, there's a district manager, there's a district attorney. And there's a district engineer hybrid. And the engineer, accountant, and attorney, and manager work together to certify that all costs are eligible for dispersment. As a public improvement before the trustee who holds the fund will requisition it. So there's a separate party like US Bank, right, or Zions, or UMB that are holding the funds. As the trustee and they can't disperse it until there's a certified, a, a cost certificate provided by the district engineer saying he's, this is an eligible cost.
Is there a cap? That they can't go over?
Yeah, so we set a cap in the uh, in the tax bonds. I wanna say uh, the, 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 is it fifteen?
All for the administration?
Oh, no, for the uh cap on the tax and then out of that we can issue the back.
It's like ten million, ninety or it might be fifteen.
Yeah, it might be twelve or fifteen million, but really what's the more limiting factor will be five mils. I think five mils, like I said, generates about six million in proceeds that equates to about eight or nine million dollar part amount. So it's probably gonna be around there. But what we don't want to do is say, if five mils, because market conditions get better, support a fifteen million dollar part amount, then let them still do that. Because five mils is five mils to the buyer regardless. But yeah, there is a limit on that. The assessment bond is limited uh to one third of the, of the finished lot value, but they have to prepay that upon sale to the homeowner. It's obligated. So we put in there, if they wanna issue an assessment bond, when they sell to the owner, that lien has to be released from that property. Before they can sell it. And so there's no ongoing burden to the homeowner. They don't even know it. Was that it there?
Sam, can you describe what happens once the bonds are paid off?
Yeah, so, so once again, this, this is all purely a financing vehicle. It's not intended to operate, maintain improvements. It can't actually levy an operations and maintenance tax. And so once the bonds are fully repaid, the district dissolves. It goes away and that tax goes away as well. So the idea is that ultimately that tax will go away, the district will dissolve, and this will be a standard. Uh, community in thirty years.
How long is that usually paid?
So we size the bonds to a thirty year maturity, so the bonds are fully repaid in thirty years. Um, so the idea is hopefully thirty years.
So the development, the wealth out. That money's been paid?
Yeah, so, so the bonds are structured that, they're actually structured in a way to have coverage. Meaning that the revenue generated is greater than the debt service. Um, so the idea is that if you're outperforming or performing, it should be paying off uh before, after thirty years. Like, or sorry, before or after thirty years.
I guess my point, and I, I think I'm understanding what you're saying, is that you fill the subdivision up in fifteen years. Which means that you know this many homeowners that are paying this. Um, does that mean that their money now is paying off from PID or they have paid off?
Yeah, so the, so, so what we're doing is we're saying that the tax from the time that we issue the bonds, let's say we issue them in twenty twenty six. The tax goes into place, let's say, in twenty twenty seven and runs for thirty years. Whatever happens in the development is all projected. We're just saying there's gonna be this many homes over that many time period. If that happens according to what was projected, then in, in thirty years, it doesn't matter what, thirty years from twenty twenty seven. Those bonds should be repaid. Whether a homeowner totally paid twenty-three or twenty-four years is because they moved in in year seven or year eight, doesn't matter, right? All the bonds are, are struck, are sized that the, that the taxes generated will pay off the bonds in thirty years, starting in twenty twenty seven.
So it's a thirty year loan regardless, it can be paid off?
It can, if it outperforms. So let's just say we projected that the homes, six hundred homes would come in seven years. But six hundred homes came in three years, then it outperformed, it will pay back earlier than thirty years. Which, by the way, we structured it. If it slows down, right, then it will delay.
Who pays it? The, the, if it's delayed, who bears the risk of that?
Yeah, so.
Speed, you're out of order for that, but I'll allow it.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, I still want some questions.
Yeah, no. Um, good. The um, so the, the bonds had a ten-year discharge date or a ten-year runway. So they're sized to a thirty year maturity, right? If they don't pay back within the thirty year time period, the tax can run for ten more years to try to pay back the bondholders. In the event that the tax doesn't pay the bondholders in that ten-year time period, it dissolves regardless of whether the, the bonds have been paid or not. So investors take the risk that after the, if, if it wouldn't run past forty years. Whether it performed or not. Yeah, and then going back to my point earlier, right, that the idea is that we issue a less efficient bond upfront because there's a lot of absorption risk. People are taking the risk that these homes are gonna be delivered over a certain time period. But once they do exist, we can refinance that debt at a lower rate and a more efficient structure. So that homeowner could decide whether they wanted to go from a thirty year bond to a twenty-seven year bond, right? And paid off in twenty-seven years. But what I, what I was trying to say earlier is that most of the time, they'll let it still stay at thirty years, but they'll lower their mill levy to reduce their payment today.
But it runs the course.
Yeah, so it runs to thirty years, but instead of paying five mils the whole time, they pay five mils for six years and three point seven mils for. You know, twenty, thirty, or twenty-four years. Great question.
We're gonna be wrapping this up recently. You have any other questions?
Yeah, thanks again for letting me come and entertain you guys. It was super fun.
Great. All right, that's wrapping up our work session. I will lead a motion to adjourn this meeting, please.
Please move with your second.
Motion is set now. It's seven o'clock. We'd like to welcome all of you to our city council meeting on November eighteen, twenty twenty-five. You're gonna have our opening pledge of allegiance conducted by Councilmember Fossett.
All right. Our father and mother, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet together as council and members of Harrisville. We are thankful that we have the opportunity to discuss the needs of the city and to be able to move forward with things that are important to help maintain. Proper function and um. The needs of those who reside in this area, pray for thy spirits to help us that we may be able to bring guidance to things that are right. And we ask for these blessings and just Christ to enable.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, which is our consent items. First one is, letter A, approval of meeting minutes for October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Council, have you had a chance to look at those? Any changes or recommendations? None for me. You're right, you have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October fourteen, twenty twenty-five, second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item B, this is advice and consent of mayor's appointment for public works, parks, and recreation director. As many of you know, last month, we were able to uh bring an item before the city council. And that we had determined in a, in a way to save the city money, that we would combine the parks department with the public works department. The council ratified that motion, and so then we sent out an internal memo of applications for those. For that position of the director. Uh, we had applications, we conducted interviews, and with that, I'd like to introduce uh my appointment of. Brian Fife. Uh, Brian, do you wanna say anything? I'm sure you don't. No, you?
Uh, I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, uh, council, you have any comments?
Um, I have maybe a couple of questions for um, I have an idea about something, but sure, okay. Um, can you share if that's what your qualifications are?
Yeah, so I spent um, about seven years with Public Works Department, uh, beginning in two thousand one. Uh, through two thousand six, two thousand seven. Um, and then I went through the police academy and um. After that, graduated that and then uh did the code enforcement in Harrisville City for about two and a half years. And then after that, went back to public works, worked for public works for a few years and then. Uh, at that point in time, Jim being the current public works director. Um, decided there was a need uh to kind of move towards a parks and recreation manager. And so I did that for, and so I took over the recreation side of things and then also the parks secondary. Uh, fertilizer, anything that has to do with that. I was over that for. Uh, four or five years and then uh was moved into a director position uh right before Jim being retired. And have been there ever since, and that was two thousand sixteen, seventeen-ish.
So lots of experience.
I think so.
And you feel like already having worked a lot with Harrisville, you're well prepared to step into kind of a complicated situation like that?
I think so. I've been with the city for twenty-five years this coming January and um I've had a lot of. Yeah, a lot of experience in multiple different departments within the city, which I think lends to my credit and ability to be able to walk into this and do a good job.
What are some of your goals and aspirations?
Um, my goal, um, my short-term goal is to solidify this position, which I did. I'm grateful for that. Uh, long-term goal was being retired from Harrisville City. That's my goal. But at least to either thirty or thirty-three years, thirty-three being um, to take advantage of the full benefit of retirement. And possibly even longer. Um, another short-term goal is to be able to get the Parks and Recreation Department to jive and work well with the Public Works Department. And uh, in fact, we moved over there today, moved all of our staff over there today to take advantage of that, the nice building that we have. And uh, everybody's talking very well and I, I think it's gonna work out well. It's gonna take a minute to feel like home over there, but it's, I think it's gonna work well.
Thank you.
Um, I just would like to read, I have several things I might try to read today, if that's okay, but.
You bet, go ahead.
Um, I, we've gotten some concern from the public about wanting us to delay this decision. Um, and ask uh someone to step as interim. And I would just like to say, um, so the position of the parks director has already been dissolved by ordinance. By saying this employee to the public uh worst role would require them to give up their previous department, assume all operational responsibilities and liability. And do so with no guarantee of continued employment after the new administration takes office. From an HR and ethical standpoint, this creates a highly unstable and unfair employment situation. We would be asking uh, uh, Mr. Fife come in um to make a department and. To take on a department that's been deeply disrupted by the unexpected death of this recent director. We would be asking him to um carry full operational and responsibility load with the possibility of being released after the new administration takes place. And we would be asking him to pause his own search for a job and pass up career opportunities for six weeks while we managed to. Um, while we're trying to manage this department without a leader. Um, I think this is unethical. It's unethical and that doesn't create this, this stability for the employees in the department. And we also would be delaying oversight, deferring training and certifications, reducing planning capacity for winter operations. And we have a lack of a, of administration of, of authority that would lead to made necessary purchases and personnel decisions. Uh, the snowplow drivers and other staff are capable, but leadership is responsible for logistics, routing, resource allocation, equipment readiness. Emergency response coordination and risk management. The responsibilities have not been fully met, and for those who say that it's been operating fine. What's the objective criteria for fine, other than it didn't affect you? Filing the, uh, filling this role now is not about optics, it's about ensuring that the department is not operating in a long and stable condition.
Thank you.
So, that, that is why I would.
Would you like, is there any other comments, concerns? If not, I am asking for a motion to ratify the appointment.
I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment.
Second.
Right. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
All right.
Right, congratulations. And with that, I'm gonna have you stand up here and have a little debate.
I state your name.
I agree.
But do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support, that I will support, obey, and defend, obey and defend. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge, that I will discharge the duties, the duties of my office, so my. With the death, with the death. Thank you.
So the Fife family one, come up here and have a picture taken, because this doesn't happen. You got a honor for there.
Best from up here.
Yeah, we'll, that was the.
I, what is that? Number please team.
Okay, yeah. This is the.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item five, our business items. First, gonna have a YCC presentation. Got down here ultimately and not Ian, but he's not here. Sadie. I'm not sure which one of you want to go first.
Anne. Amy. So.
Forward to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Ellie and this is Sadie. We're from the U C Council. I wanted to talk about two activities, sorry, last year. And the first one is the Fall Festival. At the Fall Festival, we always have super fun free games and they always put smiles in the spaces. But my favorite part is having the H Y C C flyers for the kids who come that are our age and we get to meet new people every time.
Okay, one of our upcoming activities is on the first of December and it's the Santa porch party. So Santa Claus is gonna be coming and we'll have lots of different crafts for the kids to do. We will give out hot chocolate and cookies and collect donations for the Pioneer Food Factory. The food packets will be going to kids in need and we love it all the way.
So one of our upcoming activities is on December twelfth. So Santa comes to the cabin, which is always so fun. And this is when Santa comes to the cabin and the kids get to take pictures with him. And they get locusts. We usually have hot chocolate and donut. They love, they just love it and I love it. It's so fun. But it's the best way to start our holiday cheer. Thank you for supporting our program.
Okay, another event we're having is the Community Christmas. So every year we've done the Community Christmas event. So they put it on for youth and like kids in need. So their parents go shopping for them while the kids play upstairs and the kids carnival and that's what we help with. We watch the kids while the parents go shopping for their kids and get things that the kids need. And then there's giving the giving trees will also benefit the Community Christmas event. And then some news we have, we got three new members of the Fall Festival from the Flyers. And then sadly, we're losing our H Y C C leader, Elizabeth, but we're happy. And then our new advisor will be Michelle Emily.
Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Christmas.
Which, which activity were you asking about?
Community Christmas. I didn't catch the.
Uh, so this is both right. Saturday, uh, Saturday, the thirteenth is the Community Christmas. And if you notice, all of the giving trees throughout the community, all those gifts that are donated go to Ben Lomond High School. And they set up their entire bottom floor like a shopping mall. And the kids go upstairs. They have hundreds of volunteers that come and watch the little kids while their parents go shopping downstairs. And then when the parents are done, they come and get their kids. And so our role with hundreds of other volunteers will be to help watch kids and take them through this carnival at Ben Lomond High School. We did it last year and the kids loved it.
Thank you. Item B is a discussion possible match to adopt resolution twenty-five dash sixteen, which is to approve a contract with R and O Construction for general contracting services related to the police city hall building. I'm gonna turn my time to Jenny Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As you are likely aware, we spent out a couple of weeks ago the bid results from our city hall police facility. My apologies, it was the one slide I forgot to pull up. There we go. So our big results are as follows here. And but as we review the results, I'd like to go over the, a little background here. In late August of twenty twenty-five, an RFQ was actually put out for construction services for the city hall, which varies a little bit from an RFP. So we did a request for qualifications first. And we had a large response of seventeen contractors were interested in bidding on our project and submitted requests, responded to our request for qualifications. From the received bids for the RFQ, we shortlisted six contractors to submit bids for the actual construction services on the project. Those bid documents were sent out to the contractors in early October and bids were received back on October twenty-first and they were reviewed by Parrishville staff and the project team on the twenty-second. The bid results returned with R and O Construction as the low base bid at nine million, five hundred thirty-five thousand, seven ninety-eight, as well as the low bid for the add alternate one, which is the Sally Port at six hundred twenty thousand, six twenty-eight. So staff is looking for some guidance this evening on how to move forward with the add alternate Sally Port portion of the, the bid. And our architect has created a plan here. Well, the first, the big construction documents included, this is add alternate one, the Sally Port. And maybe I should back up a little bit further and inform you that we assessed everything on the project to reduce costs when we went out to bid. We listed a couple of things as add alternates in case the bids came back too high. As the bids did come back favorable for what our funding is listed at, we were reviewing the possibility of moving forward with the Sally Port portion of that. We are looking for guidance from council on whether or not you want us to build it out the way the construction documents show with the potential animal control office space here. Or if you would like us to build it out as a shell where the exterior and the footprint of the building would be built, but the internal space would be modified slightly to put another door here. And this space could potentially be used as additional police training facility. It could be evidence storage. It could be a lot of other options while we are in the interim time where we're not, we're unsure where the animal control services we are. With the new director, not to get off track too far, but the new director at Animal Control Services is aware that our contract is inspired. They're trying to negotiate new contracts. I anticipate that will come forward to the council in the coming months. But as of right now, we don't, we don't offer animal control services unless we have a direction that we, we need to do that on our own. So and that may be a discussion we have as that contract for the old place. But because of that, we are asking for guidance on how you would like to move forward. So the six hundred twenty thousand dollar bid for the add alternate one is to build out animal control space. So if we make some adjustments to that, including the change order cost, the shell would likely still be cheap, reduced cost. And also we did remove the perimeter fence from the compound to reduce costs. We are asking that that be back included for security purposes because we took that out of the project at the time we were trying to reduce costs. So outside of that, we would like your feedback on what direction you'd like us to go. Staff is recommending awarding the bid to R and O Contract Construction for the low base bid. And then potentially up to the six hundred twenty thousand six twenty-eight, depending on where the council wants to go with the Sally Port discussion.
So that add back in with Sally Port, what, what are the additional costs for that?
We don't have the number because we didn't ask for that in the bid documents. So we would, we don't assume it would be as much as the interior space of the animal control built out, but we don't have that exact number yet because we haven't asked for it. I would think that that would be a safety concern, so I suggest we look at putting that number.
Are we getting overtures from the county that they're gonna help our animal control please?
That's, that's a hard question to answer. The negotiation on that contract will come forward. My, I would anticipate with the renewal, there would be some increase to it. I can't, I can't speak to what that cost would be, what that looks like. And we are continuing to pay under the old contract for those services. But I know we've had discussion in the past of whether that's something that the city would want to take on or if we want to renegotiate that contract. Not really prepared for that discussion tonight, nor is it on our agenda, but we do want to be mindful of what direction you'd like us to go.
Look at ours in correction. Control has changed in this last year. And that makes a big difference. Even how we would. So yeah, that's a healthy, just, that is a lot of input. I think that the fence is a good rim drug. Mark, I know the last time we had a discussion as far as Sally Port, you felt very strong that there was a real need for the Sally Port for what safety purposes when you're bringing people in.
Yeah.
Can you take a minute to discuss that? I just want you to report more time.
This just creates an area where an officer can, can you, can nobody give me? This just creates an area where an officer can pull in to that secured area, close the doors. It's much like the jail operates when you bring a prisoner in or bring someone in in custody. That there's, there's no other way for, for those people to go or there's no way for outside interference to interfere with what we have going on.
That has secured cameras eventually, I know. Some people can watch what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. All of them will have cameras.
So we're talking six hundred and twenty thousand dollars to additionally build the shell?
No, that's to fill out exactly what they had in the bid documents, which is the Sally Port was two doors and the animal control. These are kennels here. This is a public space where the public can come in and an office space for the animal control officer. So what we're proposing, if we don't anticipate moving forward with the animal control services at this time, that we build the shell of the building that could be used for other purposes and addressed later if we do need to have some animal control service.
So that would be less than six twenty.
We're anticipating that it would be, yes, yes, but we haven't asked for those exact numbers yet. We wanted guidance from the council before we had spent funds. It would go under a change order for the project and any change orders come in.
What is the cost of change?
Believe it's how blind it is. Five percent. On top of the the price. We do anticipate having to issue a change order for the Sally Port because it is an add alternate, but we want to be clear when we give that direction of what, what we're, we're going to do there.
Would you, and this is not on topic, but for my sake, my sakes, redeem what our total bond is? So I'm understanding. I mean, I know we issued that nine months ago, paying for it now. But what is our total cost that we're looking at?
I've actually invited Marcus to be part of this conversation so he can talk exactly to those numbers.
He does one of those concerns of the.
Hi, Marcus Keller with Cruz and Associates, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Specifically, maybe just a quick overview of the city's outstanding debt would be helpful for the city council here. And then we can kind of go over any specific bond or terms or anything along those lines that you'd like to discuss. And so to, to kind of give everyone a refresher, in twenty twenty-two, the city issued a six million dollar bond and that was to build the public works facility. So that bond has been expended. The public works facility has been built. Beautiful facility. I'm glad I got to tour it and very functional. So that one is, was done in twenty-two. In twenty twenty-three, when the city first started exploring and getting ready for bids and everything else for the police station, city hall project, the initial bond was issued in twenty twenty-three in the amount of nine million dollars. That bond has been sitting in escrow, so it's actually been very net neutral for most of the bond because at the time we issued it, it was a very low interest rate and it's currently earning interest in an escrow account to offset some of the interest expense today. So that one, even though it's been a little delayed on the project side, really has been kind of a, I won't say benefit, but it's been offset by the interest those proceeds are earning to offset some of that interest expense as well. And then in twenty twenty-five, so earlier this year, as the city was getting ready to receive bids, had better cost estimates and so on and so forth, we issued an additional three and a half million, which we anticipated was going to be enough to finish this project. Based off the bids that staff has shared with us, it looks like that it is enough to finish the project and potentially a few little additions that the staff cut back on to try to make sure that it was absolutely affordable. Now potentially safety concerns and other things. Giving you the flexibility now to put in those additional things that were originally cut to, to max, not max the bond, but to use all the bond proceeds that were issued. As a reminder, when we issued that three and a half million dollars, we were very concerned about potential issues with that bond. The bids came in too high, so we did put in provisions, call protections as well as potential payoff provisions. And so with the bids coming back in under costs, we didn't feel like those were necessary anymore. So now those bonds would be callable or prepayable in twenty twenty-eight. So those are how long the bonds would be outstanding before you could pay them off without penalty. You could always pay them off early, but they would have accrued interest in, in that penalty associated with it. And so the goal would be more than likely, once we get to year twenty twenty-eight and hopefully interest rates will keep going down, that more than likely, these all three bonds would be bundled together and refinanced into one bond to save the city additional money through a refinancing at a future date targeted in twenty twenty-eight. So, but those are the three that are outstanding today. Again, a six million dollar bond, original, nine million and three and a half million. So the total outstanding debt based off fiscal year twenty twenty-five, so we're actually in twenty-six at this point, but just for the sake of these numbers, we, we did it based off the most recent audit available. Was seventeen million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of bonds outstanding. I anticipate that's probably closer to seventeen and a half million after these principal payments gone through. So. Any other?
Can you do a brief overview of the difference between GO bonds and?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So originally, when the city had looked at this, we had explored some GO bonds. So GO bonds mean that you're pledging your property tax. So you have a separate property tax levy in order to issue the bonds. The GO bonds are relatively strong, the strongest credit the city can issue because you are pledging property tax. So typically you get a little bit lower interest rate, but the next or second best credit you can pledge is your sales and franchise tax. So unfortunately. So unfortunately, the GO bond was unsuccessful, so then the city went back to the drawing board a year later. And then that's when they looked at the sales and franchise taxes to to issue for the remainder of the project. And so that's kind of the big difference, the GO bond would pledge a property tax levy, sales and franchise taxes pledges your one percent local sales tax. Municipal energy sales tax as the collateral.
And our payments aren't going to be raised since we maintain pure with our present budget?
Yes, they are. Under our current budget.
So we add the additional three point five million to it?
We've already been paying on that since we issued bonds in the spring.
So we're paying for everything.
We've been paying for the bonds, yes.
Okay, we haven't had to raise taxes.
We did not, we did not raise tax.
Yeah, that's fine, so I want to know. I mean, I want the state, the city to be stable, even though we had to aggressively, but we're not paying our debts, there's no reason.
Well, and and it is, can you have a quick reminder too, just the, unfortunately, with everything going on. The project costs continue to go up, so I mean, five years ago, this building may have cost. You know, maybe let's say eight to nine million, I'll give you a recent example, we were bidding out a project that was originally quoted. I wanna say it was around seventy-five million dollars for a very large capital project. When they issued the bonds, three years later, they ended costing it up being a hundred and twenty-five million. Um, and we continue to see that going up, unfortunately, unlike in other previous cycles. You know, maybe some of the costs have come down, and they have come down, it looks like a little bit more reasonably, a little bit more stable. But with everything going on, we anticipate that if the city wanted to wait an additional five years, this would be an additional. You know, twenty to thirty percent increase and so on and so forth, that debt financing really is. Probably some of the only ways that you can get in front of some of your capital infrastructure. And compared to many other cities that we've worked with, you know, the city's debt load is relatively small, whereas most cities have. Substantial amounts of water revenue bonds, sewer revenue bonds, other type of utility bonds within their city, GO bonds. Lease revenue bonds, different things to help offset some of that capital infrastructure. The city today only has three outstanding debt uh, pieces, and those were the three that we just went over.
Any more questions for Marcus?
I had raised the one question, it seems to be uh, as far as this building here or this usage is. And and one of the biggest concerns as I investigated was the liability issues of somebody suing the city because of entry. Is that one of the biggest concerns we have as well as we've outgrown this village?
The stairs and the access for police department where we don't have secure access, they're all. All major points, so. The building's inefficiencies. ADA, BCI. Yes, ADA is one of, one of our issues, another one of our issues. Another one of our issues is the, the BCI uh. Regulations that the, the police department is not secure from the rest of the city. So. It creates a problem with uh, protected information.
Good.
Size.
Another one of the concerns that I've heard from our, our, our public is the fact is is that why do we need public works? I know, excuse me, but uh, a new city hall. What was the cost difference approximately to try and renovate this building versus building a newly opened American City Hall on it? Was it almost a million dollars, and that was it? Difference?
We weren't given direction to look, or nothing to that for me to respond properly. At least wanna make estimations on it, the direction from the council was to move forward with the bonds on a new building. So I'd be uncomfortable taking.
I certainly talked about even to put an elevator shaft in down here, so both floors were. In compliance, because it's cost several million dollars.
I, I don't know where that.
I don't either, I just remember your said conversation that we had, that it was a lot of money.
That that was our.
I think there are additional concerns, though, to go along with that as far as the expansion of this building and the limitation on the lot size. And whether we could go three stories, things like that, it are the compelling reasons. If I remember properly, of why we decided to move forward. With this direction.
I just wanted to kind of review everything, you know.
Sure.
And making sure that I'm having an understanding before I make a major vote. So I know exactly where I am, because my representation, so thank you, I appreciate it.
As far as the numbers coming back with the bids, we did receive from the bid results, I see there were three bids that were around each other. Which gives us confidence that those numbers were very accurate from the bid that we received. Um, and when we met with R and O to go over their bid results. They did indicate that we hit a very good time in our bid proposal, that they anticipate that costs will increase over the next six months. We just happened to time it right, they had a lot of interest in our bid. They had a lot of subcontractors getting numbers, and we in fact extended the bid due date for an extra week. To give them additional time to get numbers back from their subcontractors. So we're, we're very pleased with the work that was done on the contractor's side to bring that number as close, as far down as they possibly could.
Thank you. My personal feeling is this, I think the Sally Port needs to be put on. I'm not sure that the, why was, you know, as far as they're being used for training purposes, I think that's the next one item. Uh, but I think the Sally Ports, where we are right now, what we're doing makes sense to build it. We go in what Marcus said down the road, it'll cost us more money to add on to. For the few thousand, that's my opinion of it, I think the Sally Port is a good investment.
So when it comes time for a motion, we just ask that you make clear. Motion on, on what you'd like council to do with that space, and also, I do need to draw one more thing to your attention. The contract has been going back and forth between R and O and our legal team. And we did make one modification to Article eleven, the time. I know we updated and amended the packet to include some template language that our attorney wanted in there. R and O responded and basically we condensed it to liquidated damages for days. Beyond the substantial completion date and the final completion date. So all of the language is mainly the same in the contract. Um, in fact, I have it pulled up here just to make sure that it's very clear what we're talking about here. If there were to be something that caused a delay after they are required twenty-one days notice. To, for any delay that they anticipate, and then anything beyond. Excuse me, substantial completion would be two hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day that they get beyond that, and anything that. Beyond the final completion would be a hundred and fifty dollars per calendar day for that. Delay in the project, so I just wanted to draw that to your attention, that that is, that has changed from your packet.
And we, you know, as I was reading through this, did we have any concerns last time we were with R and O as ours? I looked at our liability, and I understand why we have to have liability insurance. But did we have any major problems with R and O as they build out the public works building?
No, we didn't, we did not.
And that's something that's part of this whole thing, so I know we have to provide insurance.
We do provide the, the property insurance during the project, sorry. Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna say, we own the property, so we, we provide property insurance during the builds. Any more discussion? Um, I, I'll, I'll add a couple of things um, from my standpoint, um, the police department is located in the basement. Has no D, ADA access, no window windows for emergency egress. Um, doors only are in the building, um, which limits safe exit options. Uh, officers who have to interact with citizens, especially under those under arrest or placed in really unsafe conditions. Even forced to turn their back on potentially dangerous individuals. And in the event of a fire or active shooter or any other emergency, these issues is catastrophic. I think there's a misconception that small town policing is low risk policing. Um, when actual national data, law enforcement data shows a substantial percentage of fatal officer involved shootings and assaults. Occur in small areas rather than the larger areas, and that is because they have um. More staff, more resources and quicker backup, which we do not have. Um, and the stress for small town officers is real, they have limited staffing, they're isolated, and they have constant, constant personal contact with citizens. That have access to them, and these are sustained vulnerabilities that we have. So, um, I, I'd like to address a couple of concerns also that were shared, um, starts about office uh, being. Too opulent or too nice, or people frustrated that they have to share office space, um. That's kind of irrelevant to me, that has no factor in my decision making. The current city hall um, does not meet basic standard for municipal buildings in terms of disaster safety, accessibility. And compliance with national municipal building laws and the police department, international. Altering the approved design would waste of, of a hundred thousand dollars that we spent, which would be a waste of your money and a disservice to you. Um, so I think this project is reasonable, um, we've got the money, um, and it's going to be. Um, shared burden with the sales tax. And I think delaying or denying the project places employees, officers and residents at an unnecessary risk. And if this were your family, ask yourself, would you put them in risk? Would that be something you would do to your? Thank you, go ahead.
So there is data out that the uh, the smaller agencies are five times more to be baloniously assaulted than there. Than our urban counterparts.
Yes, and in the last two years, virtual um, police assaults have gone up sixty-eight percent. With the new national that accumulated last year. Anything else? Um, I would like to make one more comment, if that's okay, uh, we have had, had people ask us to delay this decision, um, and. Feeling like this would be putting burden on incoming administration, and I would just like to say that. Um, contracts are executed by the city, not the mayor. There's, there's nothing that, the city, under the authority and direction of the city council, regardless of. Holds the office of mayor at that time, makes these decisions because the contract is between the municipal corporation and a vendor. Not between the mayor and a vendor, so there's no legal or procedural concern about an outgoing mayor binding. Um, incoming by, uh, incoming mayor, so the entity is continuous, not the person. And we, as the body right now, have to make a decision that's best for what is right now. And if we delay it, we could lose this contract with that is. Would lose the contractor availability, um, which could also go up. We could spend a delay as well, you know, in six weeks that we've been asked to delay it, and then cause funding and grant complications, which. Put us at even more liability, and I don't think that is a wise decision to me at this time. Okay, all right, we should go a little. Uh, any more discussion, or are you?
I'll make a motion that we have got resolution twenty-five sixteen to adopt improved contract with R and O construction. For general contracting services related to the police and city hall building, also. In adding the Sally Port, the some of. And, oh, and the fence.
Do you mind reading me now? About last year?
Yeah, personal staff along with the project team recommended approval of the city hall. Place abilities, facility construction service project to R and O construction. In the amount of nine million to five hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the add, uh, and alternate one. In the amount not to exceed six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Based on the council's input of the Sally Port.
Right, I'll second, okay, I have a motion to second, this is also a roll call. Councilmember Williston?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson? Yes, councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brishelson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. I'm C, which is a discussion possible action to adopt, and then five sixty-two, which is housing affordability. Sir, perfect, Simon Shobbs.
Why bring you up with my memo for the city council? Now you all received uh, my memo on this ordinance, um, uh, planning commission approved this last month, and. Um, just as an overview, because of the affordability crisis we're facing in Utah. Um, the state legislature has passed House Bill thirty-seven, which encourages municipalities to adopt increased housing density options. Harrisville City has felt the impact of rising housing costs. And the proposed uh, housing affordability overlay zone, we've been calling it the HAWS. Um, aligned with the incentives of House Bill thirty-seven while tailoring solutions to Harrisville's specific needs. Um, so as staff, we've worked with the elected officials, um. And our planning commission and various stakeholders in the community, um, over, over the last year, I'd say, to um. To respond to the growing need for attainable housing within the community, to establish this overlay zone tool. That encourages development of single-family homes priced within reach of more Harrisville residents. Um, we're trying to attract uh, first-time buyers in some cases, and essential workers, there are provisions for that. Um, so we can kind of skip, you know, I don't want to go into too much detail and take too much of your time. Um, but some, some provisions, we would like to see that these are all owner occupied, we were asking for deed restrictions. We've got some design standards, we're proposing to make sure that we get quality homes. Um, and this is not really meeting affordable housing, we're calling it attainable housing, um. Because it's more to the hundred and twenty percent household income, so we're hoping to find some sort of. Um, options that are more affordable, but they probably won't be the most affordable, if that makes sense. Because housing is really, we're looking for single-family in this zone. When we have our mixed use, that's where we're gonna look more towards possible apartment complex type options. Here, we're really trying to find single-family homes that people can own. So we're looking for it to be owner occupied, we've got lot width and lot frontage um, constraints, oh. Let's scroll down more, I'll get to, um. Oh, no, sorry, go more, more, I should have the, um, and up just a little bit more, um. So, we have uh. Required, so it's there are qualifying districts, there are areas within the city that would be approved for this, we're looking for residential, current residential zones. Would be um, possible areas where this overlay could be applied. Now, this isn't saying that this overlay has to be applied, that's why we're proposing that it go through a development agreement process. So that planning commission has a chance to assess the particular area, and city council has the opportunity to assess whether these particular areas. Are best suited for the, the HAWS overlay, um, we're looking for projects of five acres. Um, they can be parcels that are put together to make five acres or existing five acre parcels. Um, so we have some flexible lot sizes and setbacks and frontage requirements, so that um. We can reduce costs, but also maintain the quality of the neighborhood, have some design standards, so we get homes that we feel are beneficial to Harrisville's community. Uh, we'd like to see park connectivity, so instead of placing parks and HOAs in these communities, we'd like to have um. Connectivity to our existing parks that we have in, in the Harrisville area. There will be um, deed restrictions, twenty-year deed restrictions, so that they need to be owner occupied for at least twenty years. And um, there are some allowances for um, hardships in case people do need to rent for different situations, that those are laid out in ordinance. Uh, there's a period of priority sales to Harrisville residents, first-time home buyers and critical workers. Uh, there's a period of priority sales to Harrisville residents, first time home buyers and critical workers as well. Um. I think at this point, um. There are a couple revisions you might have noticed from the last time we spoke or the last revision you saw. I think it's well down to those. Uh, kind of minor things. First, um was just a definition of owner occupied. Um, we had some um language about trust and I was afraid that that would create loopholes for, for homeownership. Um, lot width and lot frontage. Um. There, there was some confusing language about whether a home had certain frontage on a curve and because the provisions allow for um. Compelling reasons to deviate, I think that would fall under that uh exception. So just trying to simplify the ordinance. Uh, also concept plans. Uh, before we were asking for a lot of specific numbers from our developers. And the concern we had was that. We don't want to know what the specific developer costs are. We want them to fit our vision and find the right land. And the right um subs and so that they can meet our needs, not us trying to change our standards to meet their needs. So. I guess at this point, I am happy to answer any, any questions or clarifications you have with the ordinance. Um. Yeah, I'm just happy to give you any sort of advice from my opinion on why we have it and. Yeah, go from there.
On the D. It talks about they're looking for a five year, but you're saying for a twenty year.
Yeah, so if you look at House Bill thirty seven. What it, it was very loose in its language. So there are certain targets that we need to meet at the city to meet affordable housing and they give you a variety of things you can do. This HAWS ordinance will meet one of those requirements. And the requirement was simply that we create a overlay zone that were, that allows no more than. Um, sorry, no less than six units per acre. And then within that ordinance, they gave recommendations, not specific requirements. The recommendation was five year um. Deed restrictions, but in talking with planning commission. We felt that the longer the deed restriction, the more protected the properties would be from invest, becoming investment properties. We really wanted to see them. Be as long term as possible. Homeowner occupied pop property. So they aren't owned for five years and then turned into investment property. So that was the, the thought behind it to the state recommended five. We wanted to go further.
Then how many units were, were bigger?
So, and, and that is um something that we kind of went back and forth on trying to decide. Right now, it's written as you take the, the total square footage of the property and divide it by five thousand square feet. And that gives you the number of units you can have on that property. So it's not saying a five thousand acre lot because it's, you have your roads and everything in there. It ends up being. Probably with roads somewhere closer to four thousand square foot average lot in the area. Um, it turns out to be eight point seven units per acre is what we're proposing in the ordinance. And um, that.
The state's saying six, right?
The state's saying at least six and. And I'm thinking about that. We don't specifically say in our ordinance that it needs to be six, so that might be something we want to add. I just didn't see, I guess we didn't think about it. So we thought if we let them go as dense as eight point seven, they're going to go to eight point seven. They're not going to go any less. But it probably is important that we add a provision that says it needs to be at least six units per acre. And whether we want to go up to eight point seven units per acre, I guess that's. You know, for you to decide is that, that too dense? Do you want to be closer to the six? It's just harder to.
It's funny.
And so you'd like to see it reduced, but.
I don't.
Okay, but the idea with having a little bit more density is that we can get a little bit more affordability. But if we want to move it back to the six, so if you feel more comfortable with it, that's absolutely something we can discuss. Absolutely.
This is an ongoing document.
I assume it will be. We, we want to implement this as the first of its kind. We really haven't seen a lot of them because the state bill was just passed. I, we are seeing a lot of people coming to us wanting to build this type of development and we don't have a tool or guidelines to give the developers. So we want to start with something and we've been working a year on this to get something in place, but like we have a mechanism to implement it. But I'm certain as we implement it, we may want to, like, like our city code always is, it's always evolving based on demand and results.
But the reason, the reason I ask this is where this stands and how we work at it. Uh, Greg Montgomery, who, you know, brought in several good suggestions and I think they need to be looked at and whether we implement or how we do it. But you know, as I said in talk with him, he said. One of these looks like if we want to add something to it, we've got a house that's no bigger than the trailer.
So I think there is.
My point is not whether that's, you know, one, that's not the point. The point is, is if a family wants to stay over twenty years, can be expanded.
So um.
And if that needs to part of the ordinance, let's do that. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Does that make sense? It's not on the tag. It's just saying, here are some ideas as these look at this hand when, and there are others come in. Where do we put these into this document? And is it important to put it in now? And go back to the drawing board a little bit versus at the mid later after it's adopted. That's where I'm going with this.
I think if we see a need right now, let's, let's make the adjustments before we adopt it. If you have concerns, let's address them. I think. Um, taking a little bit of more time if you need it. I, I think that's wise to really look at those concerns. Um. The. Um, the idea that we're going through with this ordinance is I know in the past, when we've done a lot of city code and ordinance. We're looking at just tying everything down, you know, we have our code that says you will have. Ten thousand square feet and no more and no less. And what we're doing with this is trying to create flexibility so we can get some diversity in our neighborhoods. We're saying we want to see no more than eight point seven units per acre and which we can discuss obviously. And then we want the developers to come in and get creative. So that they can build a variety of housing sizes. So we, yeah, maybe that small lot won't have room to add on to. But hopefully, three doors down, there's a home that we grow into that has a bigger lot. So we'd see a variety of home sizes. And a variety of lot sizes. So we don't just have one type of housing everywhere in our community. Yeah, the, we're trying to avoid the cookie cutter and we're trying to mix the community, provide homes that a first time home buyer would be attracted to. Or a retired couple would be attracted to, or a well-developed family is, is attracted to. So. That's the goal of the framework is to say here are kind of the boundaries. We're looking at more guardrails than tie downs. And stay within the zone, but get creative and show us something we want to see and it gives us diversity.
While doing this too, though, this keeps us at the state, right?
Yes, it would be advantageous for meeting the state requirements for sure.
I can pretty much guarantee you after this session, it's coming up again. It'll change again and they're going to press even harder than they're pressing now.
It, it seems that that's the direction is there's always a harder press. So if we adopt this, then we, we get a little bit of leeway ahead of the game, I guess, before the next push happens. And, and I am happy to address item by item, any of the comments that you've received. Um, and if you want more time to discuss. I, I'm open to any. Counsel, would you feel more comfortable tabling this and having some discussion or?
I think we should. I'm a hundred percent saying thank you very much for what's going on and trying to say ahead of the game plan. If not, it's like a string, it's going to run you over. And stuff like this, but it's not stopping. So. You know, I appreciate what you've done here, but I think there are things that we look at from other endpoints. Imports, that that's an important part that we can add in as if I were a developer, I'm looking at this and I'm catching a vision. And we've added as much as we can, then it makes it easier to start a discussion of how you're going to. That's where I'm going.
So for me, I, I would be more comfortable tabling it so that we can get some more information and maybe have enough some of the issues that would provide you to. Yeah, it's been a year to process with the planning officials. So it's, it's difficult to grab your hands around it. I appreciate these other, yeah, I mean, you know, you've got, yeah. So I'm going to make that motion.
I'll make the motion and we table. Ordinance five sixty two. Uh, continued approval discussion. And why don't you want to set it to stable?
Maybe possibly, I would say table it until the next, um, just until December. I think we can have adequate discussion before then.
Good.
Is that what you want in your motion?
Okay, I would put it down with December. When I.
Counsel.
Counsel me. But now I already.
All right, motion, man, second.
Sorry.
All right, uh. When you. I don't need that. All right, all on paper. All right. Any thoughts? All right, motion's table. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item six, this is public comment. This is an opportunity for those of you in the audience, we can sit at the podium. You state your name and you, you have three minutes to address a concern of the city in the times now.
Sorry, Jimmy wants to get forward. Uh, good evening, Mayor Tate, uh, city council members. My name's Zach Nicholas. I'm a Harrisville uh resident. Want to share some concerns about the direction and timing of several items on tonight's agenda. Uh, particularly uh the new city hall and police building contract, the Ben Lom and PID discussion and the proposed housing affordability overlay. First, regarding the city hall project, I fully support strong public safety and city services, but I question whether this is the right time to commit. Nearly ten million dollars to a facility Harrisville is growing fast and that growth will eventually bring in more tax revenue. But that revenue lags years behind the immediate cost of new infrastructure. If we moved forward quickly, we risk placing a heavier financial burden on uh current residents. Through higher taxes or service cuts. Ben Lom and PID discussion is also relevant here. A properly structured uh public infrastructure district can be a great tool. It allows new developments to finance their own roads, utilities and, and improvements rather than shifting those costs to existing taxpayers. Uh, but until those funding mechanisms are clearly defined and in place, I think it's premature to take on. Major city funded projects like a new city hall. Lastly, I wanted to touch on the housing affordability overlay zone. I understand the intent. Uh, to help first time buyers and essential workers. But Harrisville is still a small, close knit community. High density, lower cost developments can have lasting impacts on traffic, schools and city services if they aren't properly planned and balanced with open space and infrastructure capacity. Uh, I'd like to see a slower and more measured approach to growth that keeps Harrisville's character intact while still being inclusive. I'm asking for a pause not to stop progress, but to ensure that growth pays for growth and that we don't over outpace our infrastructure. Finances or quality of life. Thank you for your time.
Exactly.
My name is Frances, F R A N C E S. Good. I hope that writing and here is a proxy for Donna Clark. Donna Clark and Ben Clark live on the north side of the Pumperburg building. The house sits on an acre of ground. And Donna, not a happy camper. Because the property is sustained damage that she believes is caused by. The flooding that goes on to her front and this is her words. And if you like, I can email this to each of you city hall for your own record. I've owned this land since two thousand one, never, never, never had issues with flooding. Until you, she named the city, raised the elevation of the city's field and piped to ditch water to the city building. Twenty to thirty foot dirt piles have contributed to runoff on my land. Behind the east side. On the city is now a huge lake that is running into my barn and land. I've called, emailed, left messages requesting that you, Mayor Tate. Fix this issue. No response, no fix. And then she says, now for the third time, city runoff has flooded my barn and land up to my house. Now I have fifteen tons of hay getting wet. If it molds, it's the city's flooding that caused it. If mold gets hot. Um, city is at fault. If I am forced to file an insurance claim, I have pictures and motion pictures. Showing water from city land running onto my land and barn, creating ponds and open field. Going to my backyard. This is due to the elevation of the city's land, forcing mine to be lowland now. She wanted to be here, but she has an obligation to care for a very disabled daughter. That takes up her time from three o'clock. Every day up until the late evening, otherwise she would then have herself. And I will email this to each of you to write it yourself. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Paris. Um, my concern is with water issues from new buildings and stuff going in. Um, just recently, a new. Facility went in at the Lutheran church. In our backyard, causing flooding to both our house and the next door neighbor's house. And so we need to, when. This dealing with buildings going in, we need to. Take a look at how high those buildings are going in compared to the next door houses. Because. Um, my next door neighbor is getting it worse than I am, but we also are getting that additional water runoff. That is causing flooding.
Yeah, my name is Keith Trucks. Um, I've lived in Harrisville here now for twenty five years on the other side of the railroad tracks. Um, I too, like the gentleman just said, I've been totally against this new cop shop from the start. I just don't understand why we can't fix this one. I think that's, and nearly ten million dollars was outrageous. I'm totally against it and that's my vote. I don't remember when we got to vote on it anyway. I have two different types of cancer and I haven't had any chance to come to the meetings because I've been hospitalized. That is outrageous though, and that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Keith.
Jason Hadley, just um. To. I wrote down just a couple of questions that I think may. Uh, might be of benefit or some considerations in, in regards to some of the things we're being talked about tonight. First of all, regarding the pit, one of the things that was mentioned is there were a hundred and sixty pits. Somewhere around there that are going around the state. It'd be really good to find out data. That shows the successfulness of those pits. Meaning, they're, they're saying that if we institute a pit here, it could bring the houses to onto a rate of around that five to six hundred range. And that would probably be deemed as a success. Um, if it went much higher than that, it probably would not be a success and it'd be good to know what is the percentage? Of successful pits versus pits that are not successful. Um, and then the other part is in regards to the uh affordable housing ordinance that was discussed. Uh, Mike, this was not a question, just a more general concern. I'm, I'm very concerned in the fact that. With the stroke of a pen, we're going to basically deem invalid any, any trusts. Uh, I understand that there are loopholes that can be caused by, by trusts. And I think that there should be more exploration on what could be done to close some loopholes, but to eliminate them entirely. You know, having someone who buys a property, owns the property, develops trust. And can then hand that property down from generation to generation is a part of the American dream. Uh, it shouldn't be something that we wipe away with the stroke of a pen. Thank you.
Jason.
My name is Jeff Harris. Harrison's the chief. How many ditch incidents have you had, the people have been hurting the chairs here for any, any building?
This is not a discussion, this is not a discussion, sir, you just state your concerns.
Just that, and I don't know, you got that someday, you keep telling us, you need this new place, you're doing fine. How many accidents?
He's not going to answer you at this point. It's not a discussion.
You're only answering the damn question, you're done, you rush.
Uh Greg Montgomery, two thirty one Mars line. And uh, the comment I have is kind of a, I don't know how to re-put it. Other than with the affordable house, one of the things you're doing is eliminating the cluster subdivision. I know that's not been discussed anywhere, but it is in the, in the ordinance itself, but uh that existed or else we eliminate. The reason why I, I mentioned that is I filed a petition with the city a year and a half ago. To eliminate the cluster subdivision ordinance. And has never seen the light of day as a petition filed and meeting the standards of that petition. And so I've never seen anything about it, now I see that in this provision. You will go ahead and eliminate the, the cluster subdivision, which is what I petitioned for a year and a half ago. So the question I have is what happens to my petition, since you're only going to act on something different other than the petition I filed. Um, do I get reimbursed on the, the petition that never went to anywhere? Or just what happens with that and just a question about it, you know, a year and a half and then no action around the thought. So that's just, this is my order pick up.
I'm Roger Schuman, I live at eighteen seventy North seven fifty West. Um, congratulations Brian. Good job. I guess, come January, I'll get to deal with all the problems that y'all are dealing with right now. The, one concern as I had in this meeting was. You have, you know, we have this money, it's like, he handed my kid a credit card for ten thousand dollars and that one. You'll have fun. And then I have to figure out how to pay for it. Several years I had a country club membership and I sent my kids up to go swimming and came back with a five hundred dollar bill. And in one sense, that's how I feel we're doing with, we get qualified for a bond, so we run down to take out ten million or. The concerns are. Sales taxes are there and that's what you're paying for, but that's. And yet the, at the end of the day. As was noted tonight, nobody even looked at very much other options other than building new buildings. We didn't look at the options, we don't really know how much it would have cost to do this, it was. All that was put to the side and we didn't look at that. And I think we should have looked at it, we should have looked at all options, not just to go build a, a building. You know, the public works building is, it's a, it's a very nice building, much better than what you need. You know, it's very fancy, I've heard the term that. We're not gonna, this can last fifty years, well, I guarantee you the windows won't last fifty years, so. Uh, and then regarding the pit, one thing that we're, that I'm really concerned with about the pit. Is how do you guarantee that those people that are buying those houses are not getting built twice? Now, what I mean by being built twice. If I'm a developer, I'm, I'm counting in to put all these developments in. When I was on the planning commission, that's what we had to do, put the sewer lines and they were responsible for it, they ran it into the cost of the lot. Now if they, now if they have a pin, they're paying taxes on it, plus they didn't reduce the value of the property. And it's all, I think it's a, it's a crooked way to do it.
Thank you, Roger.
Keep an eye on Paul, um, want Harrisville roads and something. And uh I think the, the only thing that I really have is that this meeting is weird uh in the fact that. You guys make a vote and ask for input comments before, actually after, so you've made the vote, you made your choice, you made your cho- everything. Rather than listening to us, we don't feel heard, you're not listening. And I feel like that should change, so if you have the ability, can you swap that, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right, I think we're done with the public comments, we're moving on to item number seven, which is mayor council follow up. Going to start with Chief Wilson, what's your cheese?
Uh just to follow up on our preparation process, we got finished the online portion. Excuse me, um, all our policies are in line and they are scheduling an onsite visit to come and. Make sure that we're completing all the policies that we have that we're following through on what we say we're doing, so next step in this will be. An onsite audit on our policies and procedures. That's, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, thirty five.
So for our next community event, we have Santa at the cabin, that's December twelfth. The parade will start at four P M until six P M. Went up at the cabin again and the meeting group of Santa will be from six P M to approximately seven thirty P M. And then um just still getting snow removal equipment ready and then just to. Um throw this out there to you, if you, if any of you are interested, councillor, mayor, in a ride along, be happy to have you come out with staff and. Enjoy what that experience entails.
Thank you, Mayor. I am not sure that we addressed this at the last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure everybody got the, the letter stating that we were in compliance with our moderate income housing report. And then just as a follow up with that, excuse me. And as we move towards the next legislative session, we've been just hitting the L P C. Pro, the meetings that the league puts on um often once a month and then when the session begins, it's weekly. So we anticipate trying to keep trap tabs on what we anticipate coming through the pipeline for legislation where. With the tabling of the housing affordability ordinance, we'll, we'll work on that in the meantime before the next meeting. But we'll also be proposing in the next little while, the accessory dwelling unit. Ordinance, because we anticipate that that will go through legislation this next year as mandating that all cities have an external accessory dwelling unit. Ordinance in place. And, and just a couple of other things that will come out really have housing discussions in the future relating to property tax. And also sales tax, um there's new ideas in some of these. Other cities that are seeing impact from housing, bringing in economic development. They're anticipating by the year twenty thirty, that thirty percent of our sales tax will actually be from online sales. So housing is. Entering the realm of economic development, because the more houses you have, the more people that order on Amazon and we collect that sales tax on applying orders. So I just thought that was interesting and part of our discussions in the past that um we'll, and we'll go into that in more detail. We also are coming up on our ten year anniversary in twenty twenty nine of our general plan. So we'd like to get out ahead of that and start talking about what that Harrisville is going to look like with all of the anticipated effects of. The surrounding cities and what's going on there, that's my report for this month.
Thank you. Uh, Matt, if you got anything? All right, I think with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.